Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our Williamsport City Council meeting. It's Thursday, November 18th, 2021, and we're meeting remotely again this evening. We'll move right into the agenda. Item one is approval of city council minutes dated November 4th, 2021. Is there a motion on those from council?
Seven oh, second.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any questions, corrections, comments from council members? Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. We'll move to item two, limited courtesy of courtesy of the floor. There have been no requests tonight. We'll move to item three ordinance amending. Oh, this is the second reading of our Transportation Committee. Would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
An ordinance amending part one of the qualified ordinances of the city of Williamsport in final reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in a second from council?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I'll open this back up to the floor. Mr. Yoder, do you have anything further to add to?
Um, so, yeah, so there was a, in first readings debate, there was a question surrounding potential language of terminating the committee. In the event RVT would transition out of the city's direct control into a regional authority. I chatted with Solicitor Lubin, and I have proposed language that I can read into the record. Should should council deem that option advantageous? I mean, and that's up to that's up to the full body here. But the language would would be should the Department of Transportation no longer be under direct control of the city of Williamsport? By action of the city council, the Transit Oversight Committee shall no longer be a standing committee of the city council of the city of Williamsport.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. And to that point, then Councilwoman Mealy actually kind of sparked this idea. We, indeed, this was formed as not a reaction to, but as a result of the things that are happening at RVT, and we do need a transition vehicle there from RVT's present iteration to something that's that's more clear and clean cut and separate from the city. Everyone's agreed to that, as far as I know. But in any case, and Councilwoman Mealy might be able to speak to this even more in depth. I'm not sure all of her thoughts on this, but there are other transportation items that that come into play in this that have nothing to do with RVT that it may may be wise to have a standing committee on transportation issues and, you know, can deal with streets and roads and all kinds of things like that. Councilwoman Mealy, do you like to?
Yeah, Randy, actually, I think that that whole discussion was sparked, and I apologize. I meant to reach out to you this week, and then I slipped my mind by a suggestion that someone had sent to me on Facebook that we consider incorporating into the standing committee, a member of county transportation. And then I think I just sort of ran from there and thought, well, geez, we've got all these things, especially we've got a complete streets ordinance that we keep talking about how we'd like to make sure that we're implementing it. And we, but we don't really have, you know, a mechanism, a committee that's trained in issues like that that can make sure that we are. And, you know, and we have other, we have a member, obviously, that we send to the Watts Committee, but I feel as though we often, having been the member from the Watts Committee for a number of years, we often send a sort of under-informed person because we don't have a lot of knowledge about transportation matters within the city. You know, council doesn't delve into that a lot. So it seems like if we were to form a standing committee, that committee could actually serve quite a purpose, both in, perhaps as liaison with our transit authority and the board there, but also dealing with transit and roadway issues within the city. But just an idea. I'm not sure everybody else feels.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a, I think that's a solid idea for sure. And Al, I'm glad you brought that up. I had probably the same person reach out to me about the Watts idea also, and I that completely slipped my mind. So Liz, thank you for reminding me and bringing that up. And I apologize for completely messing my mind. I think that's a solid idea. And, you know, some feedback from Mr. Wender. I know, I think some other municipalities have this in place specifically to manage, I think, the interaction with their regional authority as well. So I think should that be the case? I think between those two things, having a standing committee would be valuable. So I, for one, like the proposal and the idea. So, again, thanks for bringing that up, Liz.
To that point, Adam, I don't suppose you had an opportunity to reach out to anyone at county to see whether or not we could, the city could request a member of their transportation group there to sit on the committee? Or did you think that was a wise idea, or did you not?
I like the, I like the idea. I have not been able to reach out to anybody from, from the county. I don't think that it would be an issue putting it, putting it in here personally. But, you know, if we can, I mean, if we want to get feedback from the county on that, we could pass it and then revise or table for two weeks to get that feedback if that's what everybody wants to do. So.
Councilman Banks.
Concerning Councilwoman Mealy's first point, other modes of transportation that this might oversee, maybe that, maybe we should go back and revise that sunset language that, you know, it's specific to RVT, but the committee will remain standing, just doesn't have jurisdiction over RVT specifically. At such time as RVT is separated from the city.
Councilwoman Katz.
I agree with Ms. Mealy and Adam Yoder. I really think, you know, we should get in touch with the county. I participated and sat in on the last Watts meeting last week. And when you realize everything that is involved with transportation with that committee, and where they do everything that they do, we should have somebody from the county present. I mean, let's face it, RVT is a county transportation bureau, and I think it would behoove us, I think I would like to see this table for two weeks to clear up the language and also get in touch with somebody from the county and see where we go from there.
Can I break back in here for a sec, Randy? In that case, it sounds as though, right, we should get in touch with someone from the county. And to Mr. Banks' point, we should look at maybe expanding the wording as to the scope of the committee, so that it's not overreaching its boundaries in the event that we have at work on other issues pertaining to transportation within. And just to be clear, this is not stepping on public works toes. I'm just, you know, public works toes with the building of the streets, the use of the streets and access by, for all means of transportation, I think, is another issue and perhaps deserves its own separate kind of look and advocates. So, but I do think we should work on that language as well. Good point.
Okay, is there a motion to table this? And then we can?
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Second.
There's a motion and second to table. Mrs. Frank on the motion to table, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and I think it's a good discussion. We'll move on to item four. Would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
A resolution authorizing the execution of the intergovernment lease agreement.
Is there a motion from council to remove this from the table? Okay. Okay. Was this discussed in finance?
Randy, this was discussed in finance, and frankly, we brought it to the full idea of council for discussion. I apologize. I was not completely engaged there for a second. And yeah, we, Ms. Negu was present in the Finance Committee, but really, we felt as though a number of members of council had had questions on this item. And consequently, we didn't really want to use our time and Ms. Negu's time and finance to examine this item without, you know, and then not allow for that with the full body of council. So we simply, we simply sent it to the full body of council for consideration without discussing it further there.
Randy, I'm here if there's any questions on this.
Okay, well, we can't discuss it if it's on the table.
I'll make a motion to remove it from the table, Randy.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Were there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second to remove from the table. Okay, so there was a brief discussion in finance. So questions from council members tonight on this lead?
Randy, do we have to vote on removing it from the table?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Mrs. Frank on the getting ahead of myself. On the motion to remove from the table.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi. Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes, Dennis.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion to remove from the table passes seven zero. Okay. Let's discuss. Mrs. Katz.
First thing, we had a lot of questions that we did discuss, and we still haven't received a cleaned up lease. There's still a lot of things that are not cohesive with this, this lease. You know, I can start giving, naming some of the things. First paragraph, first sentence, you know, second sentence. The limit federal funds for the construction of buildings known as Trade and Transit Two. In that second sentence, it should be Buildings and Trade and Transit One and Two Museum and the Bus Garage. You know, there's, that's not in cleaned up in the lease.
Did the mayor send the cleaned up lease to you guys? Because he had one last week.
Did not receive that.
Yeah, no, we didn't see that, Joe. Okay. Okay.
We still have questions as far as removing some of the things. If there was a cleaned up lease, then how could, we can't discuss this intelligently then, if some of these things were cleaned up?
I know that I spent a lot of time cleaning it up. I apologize.
Okay, we did get a cleaned up lease. I have it.
Okay.
I didn't get it, Randy. I don't know about anybody else.
Well, it was in the it's, this is an ongoing problem. It was in the city email. And I've tried to make it clear that some people on council are not, don't have access to the city email. So when that's used exclusively, some people are left out. So that's a problem that needs to be fixed. But there is a cleaned up version. I mean, I can send that out to everybody. But I
I mean, to Body's point, I think a lot of what Body, the first point that you're referencing, Body, is just inconsistencies within the lease. There's a point where the lease refers to, sorry, guys, the lease refers to a different county instead of like Homing. There's, there are several places where we've talked about $1 million of insurance written in the text, but $3 million written in numbers, et cetera. Just inconsistencies like that. Have those all been cleaned up to the best of everyone's knowledge? Jill?
Those have been in, that was those should have been in the mayor's version that Randy has.
Okay. So at least we're not talking about just silly goofy inconsistencies that aren't. Okay. Okay, so if we, if we strike that, Bonnie, if we assume those items got cleaned up, what other questions did you specifically have body related to the lease?
Well, I'm going through, I'm trying to go through all my notes here at this point of where we are. Was there, was it straightened out as far as what we're doing with signage? In the lease, it states we can't do any outside signage. And Jill, you were supposed to work on that.
Yeah, whenever I discussed with the mayor to see what he did, he was going to make sure that there was signage allowed in there so that the various city offices could be noted at the building. So I'm not sure which exact copy Randy has, but that was to be cleaned up to allow signage so that people would know like where Codes Office are and police and different things like that. So there would be able to be noticed signage in there. So that was to be cleaned up.
We have
You know, without the mayor being, without the mayor being here, I, you know, I don't think we should be discussing this without him being here. This is his presentation, because I also want to ask the mayor what his plans are with this. I mean, we have a lease that we're going into with Trade and Transit with the Police Department and our, and all of our departments. But I want to know where we stand as far as what we're going to do with City Hall. What the finances are going to be, because at this point, you know, how much is this costing us and the citizens, taxpayers, for the amount of money we're paying for the lease? I just, you know, I have questions for the mayor.
Okay, I think, I think we're gonna have to leave this table then.
Was there any questions about insurance in here so that I can at least investigate it for next week? Adam thought there might be some questions on insurance. That way I have answers for you next time if there is any questions on that particular issue. As far as in this lease, I, he said there was questions about liquor insurance or additional insured. Is there?
Yes, there was that in there also. But not having the new lease, I don't know.
Okay, so the liquor license information is still there based upon having some discussions with both travelers and safety. So this, RVT's insurer and travelers, they thought it was just good to have in there. So in the event you would have maybe like a food truck event in front of those or anything like that, it's not necessary unless you're having a specific event. So we, that's why we put the if applicable, but we did talk to both insurance companies. They would like to see at least a provision in the event there would be some type of special event, but otherwise it is absolutely not necessary unless there's like a one day event type thing. So that's why it says if applicable in there.
It had nothing to do with, what about the liquor license for the Hiawatha? Whatever happened with that?
That belongs to the Hiawatha that is under the Hiawatha's board. Under that nonprofit, it has nothing to do with the city or River Valley Transit.
Just wanted to clarify that.
And your question on the signage, Ms. Katz, we have started placing signage in place. The tax office has their signage right in front of their space. They have the Police Department for Patrol Division now has signage there. We are working on signage moving forward. The Codes Department has signage at River Valley Transit identifying they are here.
Well, I still want to talk to the mayor. I want to know where we stand. We're going to be voting on this lease because we, and we need a home. But I want to know what his plans are. Is, are we planning on staying long term here? Are we going, planning on moving back to City Hall? Are we going to be renters for the rest of our existence? You know, I have, I want to know where his plans are with this, even though it's a temporary lease. I think we should know what the next five years are going to be in his vision.
I believe John Sanders, who's on here, is working on the evaluation at City Hall. He may be able to answer questions on where things stand there.
I really want to hear from the mayor.
Yeah, I don't have any comment on that, Adam. Thank you, though. Right now, I don't have any comment on that. I mean, so, thank you.
Do we want to we want to table this again? It's, I mean, it seems like
I believe we do.
Yeah, it seems like there's some questions that we need related to the insurance, that kind of thing, but also just some, some broader questions from the mayor. So I'll make a motion to table.
Motion to table. There's a, there's a motion and a second to table. Mrs. Frank on the motion to move this back to being tabled.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion to retable passes seven zero.
Thanks. See me again. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Jill.
You too, Jill. Thank you.
Hey, Jill, could you and I chat about this one more time at some point when you have a minute?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll try to remember to shoot you an email next week. If you don't hear from me, maybe reach out. Just so that I can, okay, thanks a lot. Bye.
We'll move on to item five. Would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing the filing of a multimodal transportation fund, fund grant through the Commonwealth Financing Authority, the Pine Street Reconstruction Project.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Sanders.
Yes, good evening, everybody. So what you have in front of you is a resolution for the Pine Street project. This is a state MTF grant I worked with Delta Development on. We actually submitted about a week or so ago. So this would go into the grant after the fact. What we need is a $245,000, $245,200 match for the, for the state grant, if it were awarded to us in the amount of $817,606. This project has been around for quite some time. Back in the 2016-17 timeframe, the city actually was awarded an ARC grant, which is the federal grant for Pine Street project. During that timeframe, the thought process was to widen the road and make it two-way traffic. That was during the previous administration. Currently, that's not the plan of, the current, the current administration. We'd like to simply replace in kind, not go two-way and not widen it, however possibly add some parking. One of the major issues through that corridor, and where I say the corridor, Pine Street, the project would go from Church Street on the south to Fourth Street on the north. One of the major issues is stormwater connection to the sanitary sewer. And it's actually causing backup into the basements of the buildings through that corridor, including the county courthouse building itself. Like I said, this is just an opportunity to get the grant, and we'd be replacing the road in kind and adding some parking by potentially removing some of the bulbouts near to the county admin building there. I'm trying to think of anything else that's significant. This was, yeah, that's about all I have. This was reviewed in Finance and given a positive recommendation on Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Ms. Mealy.
Yes, Mr. Allison, this was reviewed in Finance and give it a positive recommendation. The, I mean, you know, the meat of it is this is a very preliminary process. As Mr. Sanders said, the grant's been submitted, but that's not in any way, shape, or form guaranteed that we'll receive the funding. If we do need to match it, we need a 25% match, and that's where that $245,000 comes in. The one thing that Mr. Sanders did mention is that this item will, is that ideally the match will be partly funded by the Water Authority, and we'll be working on an MOU while we wait to hear about whether or not we're receiving the grant next July. But if we do receive the grant, the Water Authority is likely to help match the city's contribution through liquid fuels to the project, because of course, they'll be receiving a pretty major benefit in terms of upgrade of their, of their pipes while we're, while we're doing this. So we forward it to the full body of council with positive recommendations. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Comments from anybody on the Finance Committee? Anybody, I think, Mrs. Katz.
Yes, John, when we talked about this at Finance, like you said, this has been an ongoing project in the back of people's minds for quite some time. And I do think hopefully this grant will go through because I do know the people that are, the businesses that are on Pine Street there would really appreciate the problem being fixed. At one point, it was, and this is just for the public, this was going to try and be done as a two-way street, but due to circumstances with PennDOT and the cost factors, it's still going to stay one way. The only other thing that we discussed when you start, if the grant does go through, maybe we'll try and work out more parking. And like, like Ms. Mealy said, this is a process that we're going to go through. Let's hope it gets accomplished. And this project that has been on the books for so many years at this point can finally get accomplished.
Other questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, everybody.
We'll move to item six. Would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Williamsport Public Works Department and Center Communication.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in a second?
Don't move. Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Wender. Welcome.
Yeah, I'm up. Mrs. Frank said Public Works Department. It should actually be RVT for item number six.
Yep, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I apologize.
I can reread that. Resolution authorizing the I'm sorry. Resolution authorizing an agreement between Resolution authorizing an agreement between RVT and Center Communications.
Okay, thank you.
This resolution is to authorize a three year agreement with Center Communications Incorporated. We for years were on towers that were owned by Bill's Electronics. He is in the process of downsizing, etc. So the other issue was we could not find any type of agreement that's ever been put in place. So doing our due diligence, we reached out for any available tower space on the Skyline Drive area, which is where our equipment currently is. Center Communications was gracious enough to come out and evaluate what they could do for us. We did do a test run on Center Communications Towers and found that we actually get better service for our coverage area with the buses. We have been paying $565 a month for the tower service. Center Communication gave us a three year agreement at $240 a month, not to exceed $8,640 for the three year agreement. It is definitely cost savings and it puts us on a lot newer towers. And Center Communication is responsible for maintaining the antenna on the tower. This was reviewed in finance and passed forward with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Winder. Ms. Mealy.
Randy, this is one of the handful of what I I refer to as no brainers that happen to us on an annual basis. Being as how there's not an existing agreement, we can review to make certain that the services offered are the same. I think we can only assume that the city is is receiving. We we know that the city is receiving what we need. We know that we're receiving it more cheaply. And according to Mr. Winder, the service is in fact improved. So it's a it's a hard point to argue with. The this was forwarded from the full body of or to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. It's a savings of more than 50% over what we have been paying, which admittedly doesn't add up to a whole lot on an annual basis, but it's a couple thousand bucks a year and that that counts. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Are there comments from other members of finance committee? Or anybody else on council? Okay, thank you, Mr. Winder, and always glad when we get a better deal and better results from that deal. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. We'll move to item seven. Would you read that in short form, please?
Resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Williamsport Public Works Department and Center Communications.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is Mr. Livermore here or?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is. Okay.
Uh, what you have here is resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Williamsport and Public Works Department and the Center Communications. Pretty much the other half of what Adam explained for the usage of radio towers and operational electronics equipment not to exceed $8,640 for 36 months, starting December 1st, 2021. It was reviewed and financed with a positive positive recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Livermore. And again, we'll go to Ms. Mealy.
Uh, the only point that I would make here above and beyond that. The only point I would make here above and beyond that is that once anybody, even though this the agreement would continue to be cheaper if it were if both entities, if we've been getting both entities for $565 a month, we were in fact only getting one. So this this really is quite a savings. As I said, it's more than 50% reduction in our costs here. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Other comments or questions from council? Hearing none. Mrs. Franklin, motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and thank you, Mr. Livermore. We'll move to item eight. Certificates of appropriateness with HARB. Item one, 809 Gray Street Roof Replacement in Stone Fortress. Item number two, 312 Park Street Windows and Gutter System Replacement, Mirror Beto Brothers Properties. Is there a motion and a second from council on these two items?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, questions from council? Hearing saying none on the motion, please, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Except for filing Williamsport Water and Sanitary Minute, Sanitary Minutes of September 22nd, 2021. Motion and second from council?
Don't move.
Second.
Comments, questions, corrections? Hearing saying none on the motion, please, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Announcements, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Thursday, December 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We have a budget session Monday, November 29th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. That's our first budget meeting. And a budget session Wednesday, December 1st, 2021 at 7:00 PM, our second budget session. We will be having our ARPA discussion this coming Monday at 7:00 PM. I apologize again that we had technical difficulties last Monday and could not complete. We couldn't even get into that meeting because we didn't have the 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 live stream. So that never got off the off the ground, but we have those bugs worked out. So this next Monday it will be live streamed. It will be Zoom and we'll do our third ARPA meeting, talking about the dispersment of that first part of the money, which is 12, 12 and a half million. Upcoming meetings, Thursday, November 25th is Thanksgiving closed. Friday, we're also closed, the City Hall. Monday, November 29th, as I said, our budget session. Tuesday, November 30th, 11:30 AM, Public Safety. 1:00 PM, Finance Meeting. 2:30 PM, Public Works. Wednesday, December 1st is the budget session. I'll move to items from council tonight. Anything? I was going to say something, but I'm going to go to items from the administration and and go to Chelsea Blair because I was gonna announce in conjunction with her. But Chelsea, would you care to address the call for somebody to come? We need people on the HARB board and Chelsea has led the charge on trying to recruit folks for that.
Uh, sure. We we as a board, HARB Historic Architectural Review Board, there are three vacancies for seats. You do need to be a resident of the community or own a business within the community. You need to have understanding of historic architecture or understanding of the historic preservation within Williamsport. It is a five year term. We are looking for anybody who is interested and want to do some volunteer time. We do meet once a month to review items in relation to rehabilitation of the historic homes within the historic district. But at times there are other historic structures throughout the city that do that are recognized by not only the city and not only by the county, but also by the state as historic structures and importance within the community. So we are looking for anybody who is interested. You can go to the community development website underneath the HARB category and actually look for more additional information. If you want to learn more about the historic district or any of the historic structures throughout the community. Again, there's a lot of information there, including web surveys and that kind of stuff in relation to mapping and the 1972 survey study and in addition to the 2015 study. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Great description. And it it's a a great opportunity not only to to serve the city in important function, but it's also a great opportunity to be educated on a lot of our historic structures and and to learn the background of those, which is also important to keep that base of of knowledge current and in the the minds and thoughts of as many people as possible. It's that institutional kind of thing that that we need to keep alive and keep nurturing so it can be passed on to other people and other generations. Are there any other comments from the administration tonight? I don't hear any. We have Victorian Christmas is coming up this coming weekend, so encourage everyone to to get out, explore the community Saturday and Sunday. Saturday, you know, take advantage of all the the things that are offered there. Take time to go downtown in the center city and do some Christmas shopping along with that and hoping for good weather and everybody to have a a nice, safe and happy weekend. I guess that brings us, Mr. Lubin, are there any comments from the public tonight?
I did not receive any comments. Not sure if Janice received any.
No, I didn't receive any.
Okay.